Would you have a personal benefit that continues to work? I need a motion for the approval of personal. First by Mr. Stanley. Second by Dr. Christine, all those in favor.
For the minutes, minutes on school board meeting are given this session now.
Any questions on this? I need a motion for approval please. First by Mrs. Martin, second by Mr. Stanley, all those in favor.
For the vouchers, the child's favorite checks three six, three six oh. Three six, three seven four, about three, five oh three eight, seven five, five oh two two eight five. Big roll, it's fifteen, totally five hundred and seventy-four thousand, seven hundred and fifty-six dollars, or three six.
Any questions on that? Please, for the about please. First by Mr. Venus, second by Mr. Stanley, all those in favor.
Thank the approval of personnel.
Any questions on that? Any questions for approval of personal please? First by Mr. Stanley, second by Mr. Venus, all those in favor.
The mission is that we had one commission for four hundred forty, four hundred forty thou- four hundred forty dollars.
I'm excited for a minute. What happened then? I don't know, like a half a million just tonight.
You know, approval of donations please. First by Mr. Stanley, second by Mr. Venus, all those in favor.
Fund raised, is this Chris Bird, thank you, survivors? Uh, if a drama club or less official self, Danny Grant? And uh, for the school year, that will, that will be in a, the recipient, that would be the drama club. Mr. Ernie Ashley, the plus official cell, old cheerleader, he scored a football game. That will, but will be going through the cheerleaders. And Mr. Redbird, plus official cell cookie dough, which is an influence that for the.
Any questions concerning? Alright, we have motion for the approval of others please. First by Mrs. Martin, second by Mr. Stanley, all those in favor, motion passes.
For that time is the agenda personnel, we also.
Any questions concerning? Alright, we have motion for the approval of the agenda please. First by Mrs. Martin, second by Mr. Venus, all those in favor. Okay, just, I never want to assume.
No, I was.
No, you're good, you're good.
The first panel I have to address that, uh, the whole range we had in our preschool.
Uh, as of today, in our preschool, there are six three-year-olds and forty-three-year-olds. So that's at the day, let's see what the person's saying, so with those not, but had a personal or their school background, so. I mean, whether all those cases come to school or just. I couldn't, that person.
Just towardly. Next is a approval of the B prep handbook, twenty-five point six, please. This is uh, very similar to what they had last year, they have some other, just uh, for nothing that with uh, what they have to, our contract with them, uh, business with people.
Any questions on B prep handbook? Second, we'll show you first, please, Mr. Venus, second by Mr. Stanley, all those in favor.
Next is the approval of the Grand County Special Education COVID contract. The changes on this has been passed, COVID has, that the, all the finances can go to another state, and then money comes back to the COVID, and then it's distributed to the school. We're cutting out the middle name, this contract. And what that done, now vehicles, all the, all documentation, they don't get the check correct from the child, from the state. It just, it's just easier for them to do it themselves, because he has to file the information anyway, so uh, this could be a better option. How we get our money.
It creates such a delay, because I'd file a re-reverse, let's say, August second, I would do a re-reverse for a lot. I'd file, I had to have a file that O'Killen has to take everybody, so I'll pull those together on one re-reverse, just say, state has to issue a re-reverse, check back to O'Killen, then O'Killen has to process check back to each of us. So now we're just going to kind of do every other training, which is possible for our training, to the state.
Every school, uh, um, every, this, everybody, every school, every school board account has to prove this contract. So this is, we're part, we just have to be first of all. So uh, we're on the, but every school, every school doesn't prove it, then doesn't watch. So every, every school board has to prove it, where are the rules?
But we met, when did we, two weeks ago, three weeks ago, I said, everybody business.
Any, any other questions?
We get on it on that, on those anyways.
Alright, I need a motion for the approval of the Great County State Project. Alright, Mr. Stanley, to the chief, all those in favor.
Next, we turn it over to Mr. Bird.
Okay, so the first thing tonight, uh, is seeking permission to advertise our 2026 budget capital projects and bus replacement plan. And didn't pull up that presentation or didn't just? I think it is attached in your, so if you guys just want to pull it up there, I can walk it through, um, there whilst whilst she does that, but it should just look something on this line, so we'll just hit her. Okay, so, um, you can go ahead and go to the next one. So just to give you a little bit of an idea of our budget calendar, tonight I'm seeking permission to advertise for our budget replacement capital project and our proposed 2026 budget. As long as you grant me that permission, then tomorrow I will post our notice to taxpayers for all three. Those will be published on our school website and submitted to the DLGF. Then we'll come back on September ninth for our public hearing on all three, and then September twenty-third for our proposed adoption. Uh, bus replacement plan, so just to catch up to speed, we ordered two yellow buses in February of twenty-five. That we will not receive until 2026, but when you talk about a bus replacement plan, going that long without being able to receive a bus creates some issues. Um, but those two buses, it's just a reminder, we're not budgeted out of the operations fund. Uh, those are actually being paid for out of our 2024 GLO, which is currently in a CD of first farm, which is currently has interest. Knowing that we had that last time, so buses. Um, and then in working with Christie, uh, through her head creation director Monday, and if you have our eyes on, it's not a, it's not a critical need today, but if we do, uh, have appropriations and fund balance at the end of twenty-six, that we may look to convert a new bus on 2026 dollars, but we'll just monitor that as we go, uh, it wasn't, I can't remember how many, but we added initial committee bus. Um, but those, just confused, so I, we're running, it's their school day now even, and then I feel like it's after school. Uh, closed FBA state, and then, so, so we'll continue to monitor that. Um, from a CPS standpoint, uh, it's a list of some CPS expenditures for years twenty-six, twenty-seven, twenty-eight. Again, we use those funds to upkeep and advance our facilities, equipment, and technology. Uh, that was continuing, continually evolves and changes based on priorities, one thing I did to Brian, the creature of maintenance director this year, is try to budget in, in our CPS dollars, just some proactive projects. So much tug pointing, so much concrete work, so much steel building, striving, and asphalt, just some of those routine maintenance items, uh, just move to stay proactive, stay out ahead before we lose, two hundred thousand dollars of concrete work. And so that's really what we took this shift, and we took this shift because of the reduced dollars I anticipated in our operations. And so you can see here, I've budgeted three hundred thousand dollars for capital projects, uh, in last year, or in our current year budget, we budgeted four hundred twenty-five thousand. So I, I shaved a hundred twenty-five thousand off that. Uh, now, we do have a benefit, it's in most construction money right now, which helps, and I'll leave you that a little bit later here, I'm, I'm just letting you know these updates, but um, right now that three hundred thousand dollars is pretty much a routine maintenance for the most part, but I will tell you a couple of other items listed. Um, we still need to pack that auditorium ceiling grid, uh, as well as the high gen ceiling grid. Um, in future years, one of the other projects that's been identified is park cafeteria tables. Um, and then as well as park, uh, park elementary bathrooms as well. But outside of that, the rest is pretty much, uh, some preventative maintenance work that, that we'd like to just accomplish annually. It always makes me nervous for us to commit to these dollars, and you know, and so what I've done, and what I've tried to take a practice of doing, is encumbering money at the end of the year to tackle the next few questions. Because if I were to get Brian to go ahead, let's say, 2026, to spend the three hundred thousand dollars in March, and we hit something in October, and we're trying to stop. So really with that capital project plan, I really try to target that at the end of the budget, your encumbering remaining dollars, just to attack that versus the following. So that'll, that'll continue to be my plan.
That's one. Splitter footage. Why is the yard party still on? A little bit of seats, resellations. That is the biggest, first video, lay down five, put it in front of the. So that, that's the picture for that.
Um, that, that one on the auditorium though, is well, also replacement of the house size. So all the house size.
Well, I noticed there's a lot of, two and, also, which is a state.
And then, the last portion here, the, the, the third part is our 2026 budget, and that's our Form Three, which is our proposed budget and levers. So I have to submit this electronically through gateway to fill my, my advertising requirement. It has to be submitted by October fourteenth, but hopefully it will be submitted on August twentieth. Um, and it contains three sections of information, so it'll give the time, date, and location of our public hearing and adoption meetings. Uh, it will give our estimated max levy by levy type, property tax, cap credit estimate, those are automatically populated by the DLGF. Um, and then section three, just a summary of our budget and levy for each fund. So budgetary goals, you know, these don't typically change from year to year, um, I did add one at the end, but, you know, we, we always strive for a balanced budget, adequate, equitable funding for students and staff, investing in our educational technology infrastructure, preparing, maintaining, improving our school facilities and equipment, medical buses. Uh, we need to fulfill our debt obligations, um, and continue to try to maintain cash reserves for sustainability. Uh, we've been able to do that the last few budget years, which has positioned us, uh, and is to respond to being navigated back to the SCA part. Um, and that's something else we continue to try to do in the twenty-six budget. Uh, my operations fund budget in twenty-six is roughly five hundred thousand dollars plus. And so we'll continue to work with that proactively, just to attack that. Adopted budget versus approved budget, again, the adopted budget is what we'll execute over the next month or so, month and a half. Um, the approved budget is what the DLGF, uh, approves and stamps. Uh, but the adopted budget is just our legal process, our publication, our public hearing, our public board adoption. It establishes our appropriations and tax levels, tax rates, there, there's a timeline that must be followed. Uh, but it's typically not a true reflection of actual revenue expenditures, just trying to remind the budget, I try to understate our revenue, overstate our expenditures. And so that's, that's what we continue to do during the twenty-six budget as well. As we shift over to our approved budget, uh, that's dictated by any state statute, uh, and then the DLGF issue behind will be able to buy December. Our funds to make up our school budget, education fund, uh, that's used for salaries, benefits, supplies, some technology purchase services, it's state funded re-creation support. Uh, I can tell you that our state tuition support loss, uh, a little bit more right now, I'm predicting a little bit more than nine hundred fifty thousand dollars in our last two schools. So we are going to see roughly a million dollars less in our education fund revenue from our last two schools. Uh, we pair that with our operations fund, which is used for salaries and benefits of, uh, central office, custodian, transportation, maintenance, uh, those individuals, uh, we also use our operations fund to purchase main pay equipment, repairability, facilities, insurance, transportation costs, buses. Uh, that is funded by taxpayers, that, that is tax revenue, uh, funds that, uh, you know, and I put there, as we heard, I don't even remember who he was now, but with that anticipated circuit breaker loss, a part of cap two dollars in a couple of years, I know it looks a little less than that right now, it's split across the day, obviously. But I don't see that, I think all that circuit breaker loss goes to the local or operations fund. Because I don't think there's any way they don't protect the debt service fund. And our debt service fund, uh, used to pay long and short-term debts funded by taxpayers again. Um, one thing I am doing right now is working with our teammates at CPO, who's at current review, all of our debt structure has a current state. So I'm working, uh, on that, we're taking a deep dive into our current debt structure with current legislation to be assessed. Uh, and then to dig in there, that's the first time that I've done that with this group, that is very early in the same right now. Uh, but that will be Friday this year, uh, Friday between now and this year. Rainy Day Fund, used to pay expenses to fall within the board approved rainy day fund resolution. Uh, right now, a little bit over a trillion dollars, and that's what I kind of call our self-interest fund, it's the money to pay. Some of the 2026 budget assumptions I use as I, as I build the budget, uh, I use, uh, five hundred fifty million dollar estimation for our, uh, net assessed value. Uh, that's a fourteen percent decrease over 2025, there is strategy to lie when you do that, we don't want to set that too high. Because if the fourth come in at a different spot, then we'll be in our opportunities to capture it, if you set it too high, we lose out of conversation. As we sat, uh, as I look today, uh, Gray County, Madison County are getting released, um, even though those are supposed to be released by August first. So, that really. Revenue, so debt service, enough to cover our payments, and again, in this twenty-six year, we made some circuit breaker laws. Uh, but we have max fund balance, no, no reason for concern, uh, we'll, we'll be just fine. Education, uh, for revenue, I use ADM in-person, so you have to think about this, we just started fall of twenty-five, twenty-six. So our fall count, October, on October first, is for this current budget. So as I projected ADM for the twenty-six budget, that is actually going to be our February count of this school year, and our fall count of next school. To give you an idea, the number that we are being paid for right now is eight hundred seventy-five. As it stands today, we're ninety-one. Right, so that's thirty-six more kids, ninety-eight thousand, divided by two, because we're only going to see half of that for the next six months. Um, but, but a pretty good spot there to get hold, hold there, but right now, we're, we're being funded for eight hundred seventy-five, that will be reconciled after the October one count. For the spring, for our twenty-six budget, I use eight hundred fifty in-person, and then for the start of next school year, I use day twenty-five. Again, I try to use conservative numbers there, understating our revenue, uh, probably a little bit more aggressive in these numbers than I have been in, in some past budgets, but uh, again, I hope that in a year from now, another one to eight hundred twenty-five purchases. Uh, for the virtual schools, I use twelve hundred for the spring of twenty-six, twelve fifty for next fall. Um, revenue in the operations fund, I'm going to pursue the max levy, a little over three point five million. Again, that's only allowed to grow so much each year, so they give us that max levy growth potion of four percent. So whatever we levied last year, I can levy no more than four percent more of that. And that is that three five, uh, just a little over three point five million. Um, I did use in 2026, I did use a circuit breaker loss of three hundred fifty thousand dollars in our operations fund. Uh, and I use what's proven to this point to be a low estimation for instance, fifty thousand. So those are some of the assumptions that I use for operations fund. Uh, transfers right now in the operations fund, right now what I have penciled in is a five hundred thousand dollar transfer here at the end of the year. And I will let you guys know that is, I'll tell you what that is in cash flow, because I haven't noted any cash flow. Uh, if I transfer five hundred thousand dollars, that is only a six percent trade. But we're a lot of fifteen percent. Right, so again, as we go through the coming months, I'll continue to, to tweak that, uh, to, to really work our end op funding. Uh, but as part of the twenty-six budget, I went ahead and budgeted in a million dollar transfer as a op, uh, that's been pretty consistent for both. Uh, that is the same as twenty-five, but I'll just print the budget as. Expenditures, so obviously salary and benefits are most often our, our largest, so the assumptions that I use for salary and benefits of hundred and hundred, my expenditure. I took twenty-five, twenty-six salaries and insurance rates, and current employee selections. I increased salaries by three and a half percent, decreased insurance rate by five percent. Five percent is pretty aggressive, uh, we did see what we're with Mr. Gore for, something this year, four and a half. So, we'll see, I, I may be a little aggressive there at five, um, but I'll know when we get it, unfortunately, the hard thing about that is we don't get that till, when did we get those, three weeks ago?
Yes.
So I'm already, don't need been, in, in, in the budget world, before we even get what our twenty-five, twenty-six benefit rates are going to be. Um, but, so I, I might be a little aggressive there, but I know I'm a little bit aggressive, so I'll keep an eye on it as we go. And then for all other accounts, for three hundred to eight ninety-nine, same common practice I've used in the past, but I think our first six months of 2025, it doubled. And then I, to give you a starting point or a basis, I just take the average of twenty-three, twenty-four, and that number for twenty-five. And then what I do is I go throughout the year, I keep future budget notes, and so if something pops up in February of twenty-five, the twenty-six budget, I will sit on there. And then I go back and I review all of those as I build the budget, and so that gives me a starting point, some things factor in, some things change, but that, that's kind of where I come up with additional numbers, uh, for each of those objects, three hundred eighty-five. So again, with your permission, uh, and approval, uh, I will advertise tomorrow morning, I'll post a notice to taxpayers on the DLGF school website for our twenty-six budget, for our CPS plan, and for our bus, uh, replacement plan. And then we'll come back on the ninth for a public hearing, where you'll get some, some more detailed data, uh, then we'll, on the twenty-third, we'll, we'll hook to adopt. And we can put the twenty-six budget, uh, in play, and I can start getting it, uh, or figuring out how to get it into new financial software, uh, that, that we should be on live with. So. Any questions pertains to my permission to advertise?
If not, then I need a motion for the permission to advertise. First by Mr. Stanley, second by Mr. Venus, all those in favor.
The next item, as I told you guys, our, our Argyle Academy prepaid program at Somerville, in coordination with our Early Learning Center. Those are two separate funds, but I look at them, I like to do our end op, and we try to keep them both in the black. And so, as we've taken on the DLC, and that's been new, um, I am seeking tonight to transfer, oh, what's my number? Seventy-one thousand, seven hundred forty dollars and twenty cents from our Argyle Academy fund into our Early Learning Center fund. I can tell you that the fund balance in our Argyle Academy as of the end of June was over three hundred sixty thousand. Right, so this seventy thousand dollar transfer takes two hundred. Um, but as, much like I said, as I do the end op, if I can get Argyle Academy and DLC to both stay in the black together for a week, that we're providing everything from newborn through kindergarten writers in, in the district at no expense. Again, CCF may throw a brick on this, we'll continue to monitor, we'll continue to track, look at that, uh, but CCF dollars on my way out are some, some of the bigger reasons for the fund balance.
We have motion for the approval of Mr. Tracy's. First by Mr. Stanley, second by Mr. Venus, all those in favor.
The next item I have for you this evening is seeking permission, uh, or approval to increase the hourly wage of our CNA positions to fourteen twenty-five per hour. Right now, those positions are currently paid thirteen dollars an hour, and I don't know how much, this is much work that we've done in classifieds yet. But fourteen twenty-five aligns with our instructional aids that hold a parapro certification. So our instructional aids that have a certification, our CNAs have a certification, I think it's only fair that we align in our wage standpoint. And so I am seeking your permission to increase our CNA, which we have to, our con, twenty-eight dollars a week. Uh, but to seek, seek permission to raise that to thirteen dollars, fourteen twenty-five per hour.
Any questions? We have motion for the approval of CNA stuff. First by Mr. Stanley. Second by Mrs. Martin, all those in favor.
Um, the next item, uh, the last item that I have here, is myself and Mrs. Myers, our senior high admin requesting approval of a fifty dollar stipend to be paid to teachers or staff, uh, supervising Friday school, Friday schools held twice a month, from three fifteen to five fifteen. Uh, this had been common practice back in there in my time in, in the principal's seat, um, but I don't think there was ever anything forward approved. And we kind of got away from this, Mr. Cloke, it just did it last year on occasion, but wasn't consistent for, uh, so in the meeting with Mr. Redford, Mrs. Myers, uh, this is something that I can support, I'll see you for what's.
So is this just like, is there only one teacher that's needed at a time?
Correct, yeah, there's one, one, and it'll be pushed out to staff, staff have a chance to volunteer to sign up. Uh, we'll work our way through, give everybody a chance for at least one, people can start up. So, yeah, the staff will stay after, the students report to that staff through the classroom or area wherever they choose to host it. And they, they hold those students from three fifteen to, to five fifteen.
Is this something students are required to do?
Discipline and their action.
It's time to record. Alright, I have any other question? Alright, I need a motion for the approval of second please. First by Mr. Stanley, second by Mr. Venus, all those in favor. It's a Friday?
No better way to start Friday.
That's what I was thinking, though, it was like, that was the best fucking Saturday. Go with on a Friday.
I did it, okay.
Or what about a Saturday morning?
Yeah, Saturday, Saturday school used to be very crap.
I know, yeah, I know. You know, you know.
No, let me just have to go.
Breakfast club.
I did post students on credit. Five fifteen, pants, they were thrilled.
Is that part of the?
No, it's not part of the. So, first item here is an email that Mr. Dan received from IU, CoCo.
I, I believe, I don't quote that.
IU, Indiana West.
Is that angry about you to become placement coordinator for student teaching experience in Indiana West? Let's get it right here, real quick, give me two seconds here, student, teacher, IU, IU.
Okay, I thought I said correct. So, one more. So one of our, one of our teachers was a student. She waited one day, took her new child and thought how happy she was with things that Abscress was doing for their staff. Practically by having the Early Learning Center and how thrilled she is to be working with Abscress. And so while sometimes we bring some of the negative stories that we hear out there, we always like to bring positive ones too. So this person emailed this man, told him that he was thrilled. The first word is what the student saying about, or tell her that she would say about Abscress. But it's one of the, throw down that shit, but she would get those type of emails up there.
Pretty cool. I'll just read you the email. I wanted to share a horrible story about one of our graduates, teacher's name, now teacher at Somerville Elementary. She stopped by with her baby, could say another wonderful thing about him, she and her job there, she's especially grateful for the onsite daycare. Where she could bring her little child to him. Which is why it is vitally important that we host our students, we host them. I try to balance it between Taylor and Indiana Wesleyan. And we get one each year from IU to pay as part of our teacher residency program. We also actually have a student teacher of Ball State this year as well. But just need those students in our buildings. Try and keep them. All right, that's it. I haven't had enough tonight. July cash flow. I'm going to give our first, the first one I'm going to give is one that I typically give, and then you'll see, we also uploaded. So this is the, I finally got our first kind of cash flow projection and policy analytics. So there's three additional files that you'll see uploaded in your documentation as well. I will be honest with you, I have not had a great deal of time in those yet. I actually had a call with them on Friday to discuss these cash flow items that they put together. I'm just giving you the two sided, one pager. Again, I prefer to not answer any questions over what I'm giving you right now because I have not dipped into it very deeply at this point. But it's more for your viewing pleasure and what we can become accustomed to receiving from policy analytics each month. As well as the other detailed files that you guys have. But some of the feedback that I received from them, just in, in receiving these files before we get into this. This is just some of the stuff that they provide us too, just another set of eyes, but cash flow for two thousand twenty five, your cash reserve is strong to forty point seven percent of your annual expenditures. And the head fund, these are just comments that they sent me when they sent these reports. But while salary retirement accounts have not updated for this year twenty six, I may need to adjust interest projections. Four months of data, I'm not sure, a couple things there. Heating and cooling for buildings, electricity expenses are running high, your year to date total is a hundred ninety three thousand. Whereas the total for two thousand twenty four is two hundred and twenty. So good, good eye marker, career marker for me each month. I do go out of utilities sheet where I support what I built for the month. But again, just some of the feedback that we'll get, like I said, I've got a virtual meeting with them on Friday where we'll go through the documents that they shared with me. And I'll make my notes from that. And then we'll continue to, to bring these to you each month as well. And it's my plan right now that we will upload these just as we did this month. So you will have them, the two Excel files are very, very meaty, I can tell you that right now. This other one, this is just a two pager, it's a little bit of a summary. But just wanted to get that in front of you guys for the first time as we receive this work right now. Now we can jump into our normal cash flow. Will you zoom in a little bit more? Is cash flow normal?
That's strange. I've just got empty Excel files.
Oh, yeah, it looks like we unloaded the same Excel files rather than this one. I was, I was sending this out to you as we wrap up here, but. Let me leave that mouse up here and see if I can, see if it'll not be as glitchy so we can zoom in a little bit. Okay, so in the education fund. Let me slide over here just a little bit. In the education fund in the month of July, we started with fund balance of three million, seven hundred and sixty three thousand, six hundred and twenty six dollars and thirty six cents. We did receive a little over one point four million in revenue. And we spent one million, two hundred and forty thousand, one hundred and eight dollars and seventy cents, leaving us with a fund balance of three million, nine hundred and sixty eight thousand, two hundred and thirty three dollars and five cents. Right now, we're still tracking, one of the things as part of the budget process that I will bring to you right now, some of my remaining appropriations is seventy nine thousand dollars. But with how volatile our virtual school A D M is, if it is twelve hundred or more, that would create an education present appropriation standpoint. So as part of the budget process, we will approve an additional million dollar, sorry. I will ask you if you will approve an additional million dollar appropriations for education fund for this budget year, and that's just building appropriations. So even though we may adopt it, it's been appropriated, that's being expended, but it's just, I can't. If I don't have appropriations, I can't spend. So we just want to make sure that we have a fund balance, just want to make sure we have the appropriations available. But right now, projecting, my projections have us about three hundred and seventy thousand in red. Again, like I explained earlier, we're getting paid for eight seventy five. At eight seventy five and we're nine eleven today, so we did for nine hundred on account day. When you take that, when you take that additional twenty five kids times eight thousand plus, two hundred thousand, that's from years that buy that app. So it'll be about an additional hundred thousand dollars of revenue on this budget year that we're not seeing in this right now. Which helps to lower that three seventy to seventy. And then we'll try to balance out the expenditures and level this out. And that's where I really track that transfer from head to hop. So right now I'm penciled for five hundred thousand in December. We'll see where we end up on. Any questions in regards to the vacation part? Hey, operations fund. Oh, sorry, this is debt. Debt service, no activity for the month of July, so we started at end of the month of nine hundred forty two thousand, six hundred and thirty dollars. Operations fund, we started with three million, three hundred and five thousand, seven hundred and ten dollars and five cents. We did receive seventy three thousand, two hundred and seventy three dollars and eighty six cents. When I told you that I feel like I'm conservative on my interest risk revenue, the twenty six budget, just for the month of July, we proceeded almost thirty thousand in years. And I used fifty thousand for our revenue. But in one month, we received thirty. So even if we do start to hit it, I feel like it is probably still a fair number. We spent two hundred and seventy five thousand, one hundred and thirty four dollars and sixty four cents. Leaving us with a fund balance of three million, one hundred and three thousand, eight hundred and forty nine dollars and twenty seven cents. Series four hundred expenditures. Series four hundred expenditures, a little bit higher this month. That was that business hallway for it. Remember when I talked to you guys about that? So I went ahead and took that out of operations, they're talking about maybe taking it out of our construction fund, but I've taken it out of operations for now. So that's our game number, so that's why those expenses are a little bit high. Right now, with that five hundred thousand dollar transfer, at the end of the year, right now, the operations fund is projected just shy of four hundred thousand in red. But I want to remind you, that's not necessarily four hundred thousand in the red, because I carried over four hundred and thirty eight thousand dollars in appropriations. So really, we carried a four hundred and thirty eight thousand in appropriations. So anything less than a four hundred and thirty eight thousand dollar deficit, we're actually positive in this budget cycle. So we'll continue to monitor that beginning of the year. Rainy day, no change there, I still have a million dollars, seven hundred and forty six dollars and thirty six cents. From an A D M standpoint, currently we're sitting at nine eleven. And that is what I call a blessing seats number. So I have our controls every Friday updating spreadsheet I created where it's not necessarily the number for hours to, but it is the numbers that we are seeing in class. So we're nine eleven right now, and B rev is currently sitting at eleven seventeen. So you can see N person's down thirty five from a year ago, and B rev is up forty. So if there are any additional questions that pertains to cash flow, I will take those at this time. Okay, yeah, we just uploaded one of those Excel sheets twice rather than uploading this one. So I'll send it. But if you click on one of the Excel sheets that's in there, you have to let it sit and load, there's so much data. It looks blank at first, but if we give it a chance to load. Okay, hearing no questions in regards to the July cash flow. We can turn to construction update. Right now, I spoke with E and B yesterday. I mean, it's been one thing after another. We had that sewer line from the old athletic building up here, the main hole, the line that takes the wastewater plant. That had to be replaced, that had been fully replaced, that work is done. Then there were some elevation questions. What happened, what we found out in this project is our benchmark. So benchmark is a location on campus where there are markers, that's what, all elevations are pulled from. That benchmark sat north of our parking lot and south of our new tennis courts. So when that work was completed, that benchmark was damaged. And so when that benchmark got damaged, that threw off elevations. And that was the reason we had the issues with the elevation on the track with the sports contractor. You know, at first they thought it was just error problems, well, it was accurate based off what they were pulling up of. And so then it also created some additional issues with the parking lot. However, all those have been resolved, work has continued. They have fallen stone left and right the last two days, probably another day and a half of stone and then it's asphalt. So we're right around the corner now. With new drainage, the concrete front of the future is complete, that's done. But we should start seeing asphalt go down on Friday. How it was damaged, I don't know that. I would only assume that in the process of the tennis courts being that area being excavated for the tennis court, now there's a little bit of swell there. I don't know why it was damaged, I just know that that is what they've identified as the main issue with our elevation challenge. I couldn't tell you that. I can't hear you.
We don't know whether the contractor knew.
So does that mean anything else is off then?
No, no, we are, as far as, and I don't know, the manager would have to talk this through in her verbiage that's beyond me above me. But when elevations were presented and then elevations were shot, there were obviously areas. So it's working to a resolution, what not just the way. It's my understanding that there's an actual. But the good thing is, hopefully we'll start seeing asphalt on Friday. We'll have a rainy parking lot with new drainage, we'll have new drainage on the west side of the whole building, between the track and the whole building. We'll have new asphalt pathway around the south side of the track. We'll have new asphalt going into the double case on the south end of the whole building. And that parking lot out there could be cleaning.
Did they ever, did they just put the drainage in to do the drainage, so it could be upgraded?
They put drainage in to fill the prepared work. And then they also added the drainage on the west side of the building, because the timber panel just went from both directions, from parking lot, to the south side.
So we shouldn't end up with a, everything shipped and yeah, I guess I'm just, I'm just foreseeing, we're going to die cracking in tennis court, right? Because the elevation and things suddenly moving around, we're off on elevation, it's completely down.
No, I mean, they're still finishing things as, as it should be finished, it's not. Yeah, I mean, and there's still been protests and base work and all that, that, you know, obviously we're going to end up with cracks on it.
No, no, yes, yeah.
But yeah, but yeah, not like the first big, we lost the three ports on this side.
Every time, every time the contract starts to work, whether it's the fields, the athletic fields, with tracks, with the tennis court, with the parking lot. They matched, they matched their elevates to the state that Spaceco did for the contract. And when they see there's a difference, then they bring Spaceco back in and they fix all those elevates.
Only three slots.
And so we had that fixed four or five different times, but they had to come in and readjust because of elevates. For each individual venue that they worked on.
You gotta remember, we're dealing with three contractors. General contractor, there were any issues with this, sports contractor, there were any issues with this, and now E and B. So in each of those three instances, they've had to go back through, work through to identify and adjust. Oh, normally your benchmark is not damaged. Normally your benchmark sits in a location on your side. And it's protected. Ours just happens to own yours by the parking lot, the reality is. Probably not the best location for a benchmark on the scene. I'm thinking like. That's what we're going to do. So I know.
I don't have to go out, I know. Oh, okay. So that's been there even before this project started? Okay, I didn't, see, I didn't, I left that.
Every project we've done here, if it's still with elevation, they've charged us that. When this portion of the building was built, they used that many.
I, I didn't realize that's something that happened.
So we'll try to find some secure location. I'll get my data here. Right now, with our construction funds, our fund balance at the end of July was a little over two million dollars. We have remaining contract of seven hundred, a little over seven hundred and seventeen thousand for parking lot. Leaving us with an anticipated balance of about one point two million. Okay, of that one point two million, right now, as far as just additional work out there, some things that always come on back out of a project, that's about three hundred fifty thousand dollars worth of expense written in as possible. But again, I'd like to sit on this as much as we can, we'll do the things that we need to do. Um, you know, one of the things that I added on there, is one of the conversations that we've had about this, is right now, practice football field and game field are both irrigated. Baseball outfield and softball outfield are not. So we did, we have received one quote at this point, because I just want to know pricing on some of these possible things, the first quote we got, irrigated baseball and softball, was forty-nine thousand dollars. Um, so we're starting to gather some numbers like that for some additional work, uh, leachers, we're gonna start gathering numbers for new visitor leachers on baseball and softball. Um, some of those items. So we'll continue to gather some numbers, but right now, I'm showing about, so about one point two million. Um. And, and we'll, we'll see where it goes, from, but I'll, I'll keep you guys. Well, I think anytime we get a hot summer or a dry season, unfortunately this, we got quite a bit, but, yeah, at that time, they, you know, are throwing out. And, you know, I think baseball and softball now with. A lot of it will be cosmetic, you know, within playability, it, it's not, you can still play baseball, but that's still part of the rock, it just won't provide better fruits. Better natural birth, uh, if we irrigate. Uh, again, do we have to do, no, that's why we're gathering numbers at this point, and we'll navigate that. The problem with this construction money, it's not like the old days where I could sit on this five. Uh, eighteen months. So that's why we're gathering our list, that's why we're doing the long-term facility study, we'll take all that data and pull it together, we'll kind of know where we are. That money is still generating interest. To this point, what's given I did, John, in the month of July, we received six thousand, one hundred forty-one dollars in license. So that money, that construction money to this point has earned us over five hundred fifty thousand dollars. So, helps to have, I sure have to pay more. It's, it's, yes. Um, but yeah, so that, that's where we are there, uh, long-term facility study, they've done a couple, uh, they, they've been on campuses a couple times so far. Uh, right now, they are actually, uh, sending out some surveys to staff, uh, conducting some interviews with staff. That's taking place right now as they continue to build that course. It's my hope that Lancer Architects would be able to come present their facility study to you guys. I'd like to say December, but with only one word being in December, it might be January, um, but hopefully December or January, they'll be able to come and present their long-term facility study to you guys. That's all I have to say.
I'm not, I'm talking more about part of that, but I think you beat that down as much as you can, but, uh, I do want to talk about door number five restroom. Uh, we, we really did this restroom, uh, at the end of class, I'm just gonna see that I jumped. And, uh. We did a tile on the wall, it's like the rest of our. Rest of our restroom, and the first time Brian walked in. Uh. Their weight. I had a, had a very good job. So we had them, uh, take it down and redo it, or take that part of it, redo it. And, uh, actually, I done the second time. Very first eye level, you look right in. Only the rest of you, right eye level, there's a big, a big wave. So, uh, Brian's talked to the contractor, again, and they're gonna repair that, yeah, that wall. Uh, we're gonna get a different crew to fix that wall again. And is it gonna be noticeable that everybody else? Probably not, uh, if you're, if you're walking in that room, if you're six foot tall, it stares you right in the eye and you can see it. And it's gonna drive a pee desk, it'll drive a pine desk, every time you walk through there. Because you can just see that, right, it's a little way right along, so you know what, if you're prepared to do it, but, yeah, we'll do it right. So, uh, we're gonna, this is, we're gonna come back and fix it, and then we can get, and we would request a different crew to do it, so that's the big picture.
So. Subcontractors. Uh, but what we asked him, because I told him I was gonna hear far more complaints if those restrooms aren't up for the whole season. Than I will about some bourbon and tile. So right now, the plan is that that faces a Christmas break. Right, so if you catch a complaint that, hey, that tile's curved in there. Yes, it is, and it's gonna be a ribbon of Christmas break, but I am not gonna go without those restrooms right there, all fall for the whole season.
Everybody comes in here and does that for a living, they're like, who did this, this is not very good.
That's what they thought, you're like. It's not working.
We should have. We are not eating you that spit every time. They're doing it all.
Everything else. And Brian's last question, the contractor was, if I did this work for you. So.
We, we made that a G-rated discussion, Brian. And that's something, we've not been happy with that for a project, now we're, I think we're moving right direction. Uh, B rev is now gonna be maintaining office, right inside door number one, in front of the basketball, alright, uh, Mr. Perry Axel office, or, uh, classroom, uh, in the hall with, uh, as far. As you can start to, uh, partner with them, do more things with them, uh, and they wanna get out of their lease, let's see, or, uh, pick our own one of that, so.